Here. Legislative report, Mr. Nichols.
Legislative report?
Legislative report. There's really been nothing finalized or even much movement in the area of elementary reform, so just await that. Education planning, this is May. Yes, thank you. The students will be back in September, so we will resume their report next month. Mr. Breck, anything to add about their report?
I always keep you updated on the kindergarten numbers, and right now we are sitting at two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty students coming into kindergarten, seventy-six at Bagley, ninety-nine at L E S, and eighty-five at Mountain View. So we're going to align staff appropriately to deal with the numbers as well.
Thank you very much. Any educational programs, Dr. Pepper?
Sure. We are ready for the opening of the school year. Actually, this Thursday, we have new teacher induction on the twentieth, and next week, our opening day, August twenty-fourth, will be in the auditorium, so if anybody would like to join us at the library. We have a lot of professional development activities planned for Tuesday the twenty-fifth. We have a STEM committee participating in a professional development activity with Kearney Science Center. Also, the remainder of our staff, we have Act Seventy-One, which is required professional development on suicide awareness. We're going to be holding that, as well as a presentation from the Reality Tour. So we've got a lot of great things going on, and our elementary teachers will be in their classrooms, tracking the department meetings, so they're ready to go.
Thank you. The two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school calendars.
Yes, I'd just like to note that there are no changes as far as the student days other than in March. We have noted the evening conferences for parents, and they are March third and March tenth, depending on the grade of the students in the elementary. Parent conferences are on the tenth, and the junior and senior high school parent conferences are on March third. In addition, we are adding an early dismissal for students and teachers on March twenty-third, which is the day prior to the spring holiday. If that is a snow make-up date, it would obviously land on the last day before the holiday. And basically, those hours that the teachers are not here that day are flexed out as hours that the teachers do after school over pre-one-oh periods. So it's a benefit that it provides the district some opportunity for one of our students or teachers after school. And in addition, then the early dismissal is noted for all staff on that day. So those are the only two changes of the calendar, and it will be posted on the website.
We have a sixth-grade camp review. This is no.
First thing I'd like to do is thank everyone on the board. I'm going to continue supporting sixth-grade camp, and I'll take a few minutes to go over some of our experiences from this past year as a camp. As you know, Heritage Reservation is our new, hmm, our new home since we both canceled it, and it's been six years since we've been in Heritage Reservation. Our seniors that were counselors this year, they were our first students at Camp Heritage, and a lot of them said that made it a bit more special for them, knowing they were the first group that was there. These are the numbers we had participating with each session. We have an over ninety percent attendance at camp for our sixth graders from all three schools, and this includes a number of larger support students, special needs students, and I'm really happy to say that we can modify all of our camp activities so that all of our students are able to participate fully and have a rich experience when they're at camp. Each session required the help of our dedicated teachers and camp staff and our high school counselors. This year, there were twenty counselors come to each of our schools, and they required us to process to go through all of the applications. Mr. Reynolds spent a lot of time thoroughly going through those, and then we got together and spent pretty much an entire afternoon fleshing out who needed to be where and who to have students work. Like our experience, we had the waterfront, and we tried to get students who are in art classes to be helping with the tie-dye station, the pipe, the art things that they do, and we have students with MRAs or patients come up to rifle range. But we were really fortunate this year that we also had Mr. Music come up and had us at the rifle range with Bagley, so we really appreciated that. He was one of our instructors up there. I do want to have a special recognition while we're talking about counselors. There's a boy that just graduated, Adam Madilla, possibly a lot of you know him. He was asked to work with one of our students that had very limited mobility, basically in a wheelchair almost all the time. And he, without hesitation, took on that role. Within an hour, within an hour, he was the absolute role model for this young boy who could say something but glowing things about Adam. And we actually had to almost enforce him to have evenings off to be with his fellow counselors. He was very dedicated to helping, and I sent a special note to his parents for that. He was wonderful. Our teachers and nurses and additional staff really put in a lot of time as well. The teachers, they're up in the morning, they're getting the kids ready, they have breakfast with them, lunch with them, dinner with them, sitting at the same table, they're sleeping in the same houses with them. There's no time off, the whole time we're there, and it takes, it takes a special person to take that on, and we have wonderful teachers that are willing to do that every year. Our secondary nurses, the junior and senior high, that stepped in for us this year because, as you may or may not know, our regular nurse got very ill. She came to camp with a respiratory infection, and it continued to get worse, and by the time she came back the second week, she was, she should not have come back. She, she just insisted on being there for us, and we ended up making the quality that her some medical help. So in addition to having the principal step in because they're able to give out medication, we have Mrs. Wossi and Mrs. Madilla, both stepped in, helped us out, did a fantastic job, and they've brought themselves all they were there to. We have a couple of special camp managers up there that are going to help us, and staff members that come in. There's a gentleman named Joe that's on here in the staff that's R I certified and helped us out, and a woman named Sherry who we could never use the challenge course in our works. Fantastic. Some of the things that we do at camp, our students are scheduled from the time we wake them up in the morning to the time we tell them to stop at night. We have our tie-dye station and pipes that we have for art. This is a picture from the challenge course, where students have to learn cooperative activities and be able to depend on one another. It's really good for team building. We have night games and relays, where we put the kids in different groups, and they rotate through a series of games and activities there, including the pipe making, which we'll see about that. We have an archery station. We have our rifle station. Many of our students are very familiar with using this equipment, and we emphasize safety prior to going and while they're there as well. We have kayaking that we do at the waterfront, as well as we put fishing at the waterfront. And I would like a photo of this. Jessica Meyer will click on this and have this little video on.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that. I didn't see it. He emailed it.
Oh, okay. If we can't do it, that's okay. I can do it, sure, I can. I have a short, a really short video that we talk, because one of our teachers, Ashley Stevenson, who is the band and music instructor at Bagley, she stepped in when Adam Madilla was his enforced friend time at his counselors. And when the student in the wheelchair was making his pipe, and he couldn't make his pipe fly, obviously, she was running back and forth across the field, pushing his wheelchair hard enough to get his pipe up in the air. And the smile on his face was the most amazing thing, and I turned to this horario and I said, and of course, my phone's dead, I said, "Can you please video this?" Because it really touched my heart, and this, the pipe, it's exactly what our teachers do. They just, they step in and they step up and do what needs to be done to take care of the students. We also have Chad Schmeling from the junior high, who really stepped up and helped with one of our students that was there with Down syndrome. Boy, he had been moving, he had laughing, smiling, singing, hiking, I mean, they did everything, and it was just an amazing thing to what an essential experience as well. We were very fortunate that each elementary school's PTO was willing to write us a check to cover the cost of three new kayaks. Our kayak team instructors had mentioned to me, when I asked if anybody had any ideas, they said, "We have a lot of little bitty kids." And everybody, you know, doesn't really think about that, and so we were able to get the PTOs to get in need, and they wrote us checks for new kayaks. And each of the school's students wrote a nice little poster board back in the PTO that's going to be on the front of everything, so they don't get any damage in the school year. Some of the things that we have talked about for the future of camp. I'm very fortunate that I was asked to be part of this STEM team, or in terms of STEM connections, that we can use our activities at camp. One of our faculty teachers from the junior high mentioned an outdoor cooking station, and she's never been to camp before. We talked about it a little bit, and then while she was at camp, I approached her one evening, and I said, "So what do you think of our camp?" And she said, "It's really fun. I know, like you said, this is going to be a challenge." And I said, "It is, but we can, we can talk about it some more and possibly have an outdoor cooking station." Mr. Frank and I talked about possibly looking for a grant for trail biking to get some of the students to be able to ride trail bikes for one of their hour activity stations up there. And then personally, I would like to add a way that we could do some recycling and some of the materials that we use up there, and reducing our use of paper by not printing everything I sent out to the teachers, but sending them Google logs. And we're looking into what activities have been in the book for years in the year that maybe we don't use them all the time. We can have them be separate, they can laminate it, and then we don't have to print those year after year. We'll have them to refer back to, and they don't necessarily need every single teacher's book and every single student's book. I do have to leave here with you some copies of camp DVDs. We have teachers that take a lot of photos throughout the time that they're there, and they make a DVD that is available for purchase, and it helps to fund some of our activities. And then, what's really fun, and I'll leave this for you to look at also, when the students come back, part of their, as part of their language charts, they make a brochure about camp. And I suggested to the teachers, how they say, "Write a brochure as if it was for the fifth grade student that they've never been to camp." What do you really want them to know about camp? So they all made these adorable tri-fold brochures. I got quite a kick out of looking at them, and I hope that you will also. And I just really want to, again, extend my thanks to everyone on the school board for supporting this activity. It's the one thing that students look back on and remember after a year. So thank you. Thank you all so much.
I just want to recognize Melissa and commend her for not having a nervous breakdown during camp.
We're not going to talk about all this, are we?
No, we aren't. This was Melissa's first year as camp coordinator. Mrs. Bates held that position for like a hundred years prior to Melissa. And, and you know, being a camp coordinator for all of those years, there are things that naturally, you know, were instinctual for Mrs. Bates, and she provided a lot of great direction to Melissa in coordinating, and she was a great resource for Melissa. But whether it was Mother Nature, God, or whatever, they threw about five hundred curveballs at Melissa from her first day at camp through the day when Mrs. Kumpel got sick, and she called me on the phone and said, "I need a camp nurse," to the last group that was there, and we had a teacher who hurt his neck and couldn't go to camp to be a housegoer. So if there was a problem for her to encounter, she encountered it, and she did it with class, and she went right through it. So I commend Melissa on the hard work that she put into camp. You saw her emotion talking about the boy and the pipe. That's what the experience means to our kids, and, and I'm glad that we have somebody dedicated who understands the essence of camp, is willing to coordinate the event and make it what it has been and know what it needs to be in the future. And I think you saw that in the last slide. She knows the direction, and she wants to go to camp, and that's true. Thank you, Melissa.
Along those lines, also on your agenda next week will be a resolution to approve the sixth-grade camp program and the dates for next year. That would be an agenda item. Also, next week to approve a tuition student from the United States. There's quite an extensive list here of things we approve that we do, service agreements with many organizations. So we will approve Pennsylvania educators' hearing house contract with service, approve an N H S human services agreement, approve the New Story tuition agreement for next year, approve Westmoreland community eight-minute transition services for next year, and approve a Westmoreland community eight-minute E S L services contract for next year, and approve the S P H substance abuse services memorandum agreement for next year also, and approve the Presley Ridge Bay School Greenberg contract, and lastly, to approve the Bearcat B E S P Building Excellence Group Skills Training Transition Program. And those will all be agenda items for resolutions for next week. The next curriculum for the beginning is next Tuesday at five thirty here on C S C.
Somebody turn the microphone off a little bit. Nobody can hear anything back here.
Thank you, Mrs. May. Mrs. Elder, finance?
Thank you. You will see in attachment that you can look at the graduate reports now, and that will be on the agenda for next week, as will paying the bills and listed Westmoreland transfer be done at the end of the year. And we will have two gifts, if I understand, and for what's in the grant, tell us about them.
We received one thousand dollars from United Way for the school readiness transition plan, as well as nine hundred twenty dollars from the Westmoreland community impact grant, and that will go towards Stacy Miller and Mary Blowish, and I believe that's for autistic classrooms.
One of them is support of the autistic classrooms, and the other grant is to support art education across the elementary special education at Mountain View Bagley as an outreach to the local art center.
Thank you. So those are the two grants that we ask to approve next week.
Thank you. And the minutes of finance meeting that we've held, August fifteenth attached to your agenda. And the next funding for the meeting will happen on Wednesday, December second, at seven AM in the F D building. Thank you. Property supply, Mrs. Cozart?
Yes, next week will have an agenda item for a resolution between the deal on elementary construction and associated with the administration of property supply committee that will go forward with the new building or look at elementary school development within the city. I'd like to discuss some of the city issues of this resolution.
So the resolution next week is recommended by the property supply committee, as Mrs. Cozart mentioned, is to move forward with building a new metro elementary school, and it would also authorize the administration to begin discussions with necessary people regarding parcel of land to, to acquire. Thank you very much, that piece of property. In addition to other items, the agenda item would also authorize the district to hire access architecture to be the architect of record for the building, as well as to authorize the business office to contract with E F M, Public Financial Management, to work with the district as far as financial planning, also to authorize any type of planning on steps as far as moving forward with that building. And so that is the summary of the resolution as of the look on next week's agenda.
And as an attachment to this agenda, or this meeting minutes, the property supply committee meeting minutes from the August fifteenth meeting, and our next property supply meeting will be December third at three thirty in the F D building.
Student activities. Mr. May, would you like to give us the Steeler Day report?
Yeah, it's kind of ongoing still to explain this year. The Steeler Day itself, Steeler Day was a very successful one. Nice call to help that I have without a day. It was a beautiful day, the weather was great. But if you get your, I do a recap report of, you know, everything that happens in September, what we had done this year, we had thirteen booster organizations working together from June through September, because we had an East Coast National Baseball Forum here, and we had Steeler Night to operate, and we had a Clark's concert to help the city with the end of the month, and we also had the Steeler's happening, our Rossi Field on standby for practice. So it's kind of a flowing thing, rather take product, send it back, print product, send it back, you know, it's an ongoing fluid process right now, and after the Clark's concert, football is then going to buy back all the stock left for their season, so nobody gets stuck with anything, and we'll know exactly how much money we made, where the organization went, and we know we have some targets to upgrade some things at our, our school with some of this Steeler money. It's kind of cool to see thirteen, I mean, there's thirteen groups, from football to baseball, swimming, cheerleading, band, the band's going to hook this weekend, or next weekend, for the Clark's, and football's going to show them how, they're going to get out and help them do it. It is a big event here, getting through very, five thousand people, and football's all here to help them. And I took, as a statement, bringing all the groups together and continuing to work, and I'll have a printout to show you exactly which booster group, how much money and why, and then that'll, of course, be sent from Mr. Rooney and the speakers, and, but that's why it's fluid right now. We're not quite done until next Saturday.
Go to the next one. And on the agenda will be the warm bits for the national sports equipment, and I'd just like to note that the boys varsity football game will begin at seven PM at Memorial Stadium. They used, before they were at seven thirty. One exception is the way, they all want the game to be at seven PM. Also listed for you is fan day when coming and seeing the night players. Dr. Borst, communication.
Next part's the recreation meeting is Thursday, August twentieth. I'm pretty sure the reputation is, and I think they should publish it. I like the white kids' rules, he said, the three rules of camp. Don't touch snakes, don't flying, you will be sent home. Right there.
Be the administrator.
Those rules have been effective thirty-five years.
Good rules.
It's the only thing that gets us out. The environment stays the fight.
That's all I got.
What's going on here, Mr. May? Yes, the next W I U committee meeting will be next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at seven thirty PM. Unfortunately, we don't have our meeting, so I probably won't be able to attend, but that is the first meeting since the new director passed. That's all I have. Thank you. D W C T C, please, bring it, please, Mrs. Cozart?
Yes, our next, D W C T C, joint operating committee, will be tomorrow night.
There's going to be lots of stuff. For the policy, Mrs. Elder?
Thank you. Nothing to say about policy, but it's all about the time enough to provide a solid town for the candidates who are ready for P S P A office, and there are, there's more than one for each, and I have to laugh because I always wondered, wasn't much ripped off, but now that I've got some, I don't know how to make recommendations. But it seems to me that Mr. Knower is doing an excellent job, and as you notice in your daily communicate that you receive from P S P A, very often, he has mentioned that Adam instituted something or suggested something, so I think that speaks well with him. And I noticed in the comments that Mr. Fraschettto, who's the last person, is on a joint operating committee of the Boat Tech Board, so that speaks well to me. But please read these, they're very informative, and we can talk about how we-
Still can't hear.
And we're going to talk about how we can counter ballot.
Microphone's off.
We have a complete report, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transportation, Mr. May?
Thank you. We will have three homecoming events next week. Question is to approve the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen schedule for the Bucks and Betwars for A J Mars and Brandon J transportation, as you guys have talked in on your agenda. To approve the people transportation schedule for twenty eighteen, twenty sixteen, and last but not least, to approve the virtual transportation contracts. And our next transportation meeting meeting will be Wednesday, September third.
Now, what can Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Mrs. Myers, agree to give us all an update on our meeting tonight, and the meeting minutes will be attached in your next packet.
I'll just give a brief overview of the information covered at tonight's meeting. As Mr. Palmer said, you'll have more detailed minutes attached next week. We discussed the fifteen, sixteen summer equipment refresh that we completed. There were a lot of equipment updated, mainly in our elementary buildings. We really focused on grades three to six for the initial implementation. We also refreshed faculty laptops at the junior high. A lot of these student machines that we implemented are Chromebooks, which is a great device that we've been using and piloting in the secondary schools, and have had a lot of success with that. At the secondary level, grades nine through twelve, we are continuing our implementation. We have a B Y O D program and a leasing program that our students participate in, and are beginning distribution this week. And we've also implemented some equipment in relation to the Project Lead the Way grant that we are participating in, and populated each of our elementary buildings with a cart of thirty iPads in each building, and built on our CAD lab at the junior high school with the addition of a mobile lab that's being used there. The foundation hasn't officially announced, but is supporting some funds to continue our equipment refresh at the elementary level, and will do that at the K to two level to be able to refresh those machines as well. And we're also going to support the purchase of three D printers, additional ones at the secondary level, and ones for each of our elementary buildings. I touched on professional development flash talk opportunities for our teachers, the teachers that are required to complete twelve hours professional development each year. the teachers that are required to complete 12 hours professional development each year and this summer it just really seemed to explode of opportunities for them. We've had 49 activities, some repeated, for instance, Mr. Frederick De Dallas training with our teachers and there were multiple sessions, but there were 49 activities in all with over 300 participants. So we thought that was a great turnout and it's nice to see that the teachers are completing some of these over the summer months. I had talked about our student information system, some changes that we're making at the secondary level to get parents more attuned to our home access center so they can have that constant interaction and communication and information. And we're going to pilot an opportunity for them to update student information online this year at the secondary level. They don't have to do it that way, but they can if they choose to. And also putting our report card online for secondary students this year as opposed to printing it. Parents can still have the ability to print it. We would also provide that for parents that maybe wouldn't have that ability or would just request one from us. And implementing online registration for our students beginning this fall. It was something we pivoted with our kindergarten hits last year. We were able to use that as an opportunity to learn from it, correct some things that, you know, maybe weren't working so well and are going to be learning that out, Mr. Clyde. We're also going to be transitioning to IUP Plus, which is a component, an additional component on our student information system from the system that we currently use, which actually sits separate aside from our student information system. So by transitioning to IUP Plus, because it's integrated with our student information system, it just gives greater opportunity to have consistency with the information, accuracy with the information and to be able to provide that information to people that really need to have the access to it. So that transition will begin this year. It'll take some time to work through that. I'll be working closely with Dr. Solis on that and we will begin that process. Uh, the district website, I've been talking about this for a little while, finally applying the new responsive design template. I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to look at the website recently, but it has a completely new look and the design is responsive in that it will respond depending on device you're viewing it from. So if you're looking at it on a mobile phone, if you're looking at it on a small tablet or if you're looking on it on a full-size desktop, the screen, the buttons, the commands will respond accordingly. So it's kind of a nice feature. Along with that, a different piece, but still connected to the website, is we've rolled out a mobile app for the district, corresponds with the website. So if you haven't had an opportunity, download it. It's on the Apple iTunes Store and it's in the Google Play Store and it's free. So again, it gives a nice opportunity to view the website information and it has push notifications. So it'll give us the opportunity to again make that connection with parents, with families, with information that we want to push out to them. One of the other things that we talked about is there's a product called School Dude. I'm going to give a word of it. A lot of schools use it in this area. It's a maintenance work order system and so we're in the process of rolling that out on a larger scale. We have a small group using it as a pilot piece. And there's also another piece that we're going to be adding to that, which is exciting, an event essentials piece, which allows for facility requests to all be done electronically. So the maintenance work order system is a piece that will allow our personnel inside the district to get, to put in work orders and request maintenance items to be completed, but then also having the facility requests be tied to that so that if we even have outside organizations that want to rent facilities, it's a great tool that we can provide with a calendar. I know the principals appreciate knowing who's in their building, when, and to be able to see those items. So that's an exciting piece to come. The security camera install at the secondary level is completed. We installed cameras in the junior and senior high school. Our administrators were trained on that system and that expanded the very small system we had to a much larger scale for safety and security. We have a fingerprint machine in our district office that we've been using. There was a, a new, I don't know, I want to call it a lot, I don't know if it was a lot.
Fair play.
Okay, in that requiring fingerprints to be renewed every three years. In the past, once you got your fingerprints to be employed, you didn't need to get them again. And so in knowing that that was going to become something that was in great demand, we contracted a cogent to get our own fingerprint machine and offer and fingerprint services to individuals that need those. And to date, we have processed over 300 applicants. So it's definitely something that's been worthwhile and the district is a small stadium back for each, for each fingerprint that they process. We upgraded our broadcast and production studio equipment that is used in both our junior and senior high school for video broadcast and production classes. And I was speaking with a teacher that is responsible for having those classes and managing that equipment and she's very excited about the new, um, opportunities that she's going to have with the equipment and the functionality that she didn't have before. Mr. Palmer suggested that maybe when she gets a little more comfortable, we can have her here to demonstrate some of the features that she has. She was talking about green screen effect, being able to go mobile with broadcasts and just a lot of really, and she had mentioned to me a lot of features that if any of our kids were to step into a actual broadcast and production studio at a corporate level, they would see the same type of functionality. So she's very, very excited about that. Uh, I also gave an update on our ECAT, excuse me, ECAT Academy enrollment for the beginning of the year, which is pretty much for typically at this time. Any questions?
I'd just like to go back here to the first, to the first thought off. Institution of the Machines and the primary level. Just in three, four, six, and level one fits, we're putting in 700 new machines at the primary level of all of this school. And then in the junior high, we're adding, I guess about 250 machines of junior high and it's just, our kids are getting prepared now at their number age, talking about getting them to the kindergarten and they're learning much, much faster, picking up much, much quicker. By the time they hit junior high, if you set, and they're ready to go, our kids are ready to learn, ready to go, they have the machines, they know what they have to do. To me, sitting on the board for six or seven years, it is amazing from where we were when I got here to where the district and the administration draws and to see the kids working with it and to hear parents in Walmart telling me about how excited they are about it, you know, it goes a long way. And it's every kid in the district will have that ability. And it's truly amazing, truly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go with the next eleven resolution that we are going to have been discussed and will submit for public discussion only if you have any comments or questions on the eleven resolutions. If you do, come to the committee and state your name and question.
I appreciate the board willing to vote on these resolutions tonight. They deal with personnel and school is starting on Monday and so it is obviously to the benefit to have these resolutions approved this evening. So I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 23, which is the resignations that are-
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 24, which is the hiring of Anne Zigg as a kindergarten teacher at the Tred Elementary School at Step One Bachelors. As you may recall, we have been watching the numbers in kindergarten and it is important at this time that the board move to add, not add, but replace a teacher who had left the district in June. So I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 24.
So moved, second. So moved and second, any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 25, which is the approval of Dan Kraft as the teacher leader position in language arts at the senior high school for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 26, which is the approval of the support personnel classified appointments listed.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 27, which is the support personnel classified appointments. These are personal care assistants that are approved on an annual basis to support our students in the district.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 28, which is a list of additional substitute teachers that would be available for the district.
Okay, second. So moved and second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 29, which is the approval of support personnel supplemental appointments.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 30, which is the approval of the AmeriCorps personnel, which is Jennifer Brusinko, who will service Latre elementary school for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 31, which is the granting of tenure of the seven teachers that are listed who have all met the requirements of the Pennsylvania Department of Education to receive tenure.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 32, which is an annual resolution to approve security police for the 2015-16 who are used on an as needed basis.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 33, which is also an annual resolution to approve the professional substitute rate. These are for teacher substitutes. The rate is listed as $90 per day for the first 29 days the substitute works and $100 per day for 30, per day 30 and up. And in addition, the resolution includes an amount of $120 per day when a substitute is in a classroom for 20 consecutive days in the same position, same teacher.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 34, employee personnel issued 2015-16 number one as listed.
So moved, second.
So moved and second, any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and that goes as a chance.
And just to note, as Dr. Tepper referenced, August 24th, next Monday, is our first day for staff to return to school and our students return August 31st, Monday. The other items that are listed there, as clearly noted, there are many activities that occur in September and October, parent nights and so on, so please refer to those. Those are also all listed on our website. In addition, our board meetings are August 25th, next Tuesday, September 15th and September 22nd. And I just wanted to note that because of the PSPA conference in October, that date is Monday, October 12th rather than Tuesday because that conference begins on Tuesday. So just please make that note that the October date, the first meeting is Monday, September and Tuesday. Thank you. Meeting adjourned?